Good evening, everyone. Tonight is December 28, 2022. It is 6:30 PM. And I would like to call to order the Columbus City Council meeting. Our first order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us if you care to. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Would someone care to make the motion?
This is Janet. I move to approve consent agendas number four and six. This is Sue, all second.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion or question? All do a roll call vote all evening as we're on the interactive program again.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. The next issue is public open forum. Is there anybody in the audience or online who would care to speak at the public open forum? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on. Our next item is the Planning Commission report with the chairman, Ron Hanegraff, doing the report for us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Excuse me. Nervous getting up before a mic. Well, it's hard to start off tonight to review what we had on the 21st because you all were there. But I'll start out the evening with two motions concerning the application of Classic Construction Incorporated on behalf of Three Beacon Holding LLC, Blaine Brothers. The first motion concerned the Bonfire Farmstead preliminary flat. There wasn't much of a discussion amongst the Planning Commission and following the findings of facts and recommendation reports by Dean Johnson of Resource Strategies Corporation and Kevin Betner, city engineer. The commission sends this application to the council with our recommendations. Want me to go on or are you going to deal with that?
Let's deal with that while we're just on the top of the, top of mind. So has anyone, most of us were at the meeting or we had zoomed in. Does anyone have any questions or discussions for the chairman?
Not on the first one.
Yeah? Anybody? All right. Well, then I'll make the motion to approve the Bonfire Farmstead preliminary plat, subject to the conditions 1 through 10 of the planner's report dated 12/22/2022 and the city engineer's comments listed in the report dated 12/02/2022. Is there a second?
This is Sue, all second.
Now, any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. All right, Mr. Chair.
All right. The second motion concerning Blaine Brothers was a truck aligned plan unit development conditional use permit. After the Planning Commission's public hearing on December 7, 2022, the applicant submitted a revised landscaping plan, which drawings, I don't know if you have it in your packet or not, on pages 40 through 44 of your packet showing the appearance from Hornsby. This is the landscaping. There was some discussion concerning a little more screening, such as more trees on Hornsby Street, and Dean Dally, president and CEO of Blaine Brothers, did not see an issue with that. The commission believed that this could be handled by the city staff. The Planning Commission did approve this PUD and CUP on the findings of facts and recommendations again by Dean Johnson of RSC and Kevin Betner, the city engineer.
Is there anyone who has questions for the chairman?
I have, I just have one. It's just a curious question. I don't know if you can answer it or if somebody else can, but I did drive by the existing truck align business and they have like five stalls for service and this one is 19. So I was just curious what the, if there was another business that you're combining with it, or is this just organic growth that you're expecting once you move to your new location?
You must be talking over my shoulder here.
Yes, I am.
Would you come up to the mic, please? Identify yourself for the record and tell us what you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilman. Organic growth is what we are planning on and what we've experienced over time.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think that was the only, really, the only question I had.
Anyone else?
I have a question. So I know the Planning Commission, in particular Commissioner King, was asking for more in the way of landscaping. And I was thinking that maybe our intent wasn't very clear, so I thought I would, I would try to clarify that. And maybe it is clear, but you know, I think as I, as I drove by the site and kind of envisioned what would be parked out there, what I don't know is what the trucks are going to look like. So I was the one that submitted the pictures of the fence that Bona Brothers has. And if you peek through that fence, it's, it's a real truck graveyard in there. You're glad the fence is there because it's pretty, pretty bad behind it. And so I don't have a good sense of how beat up the trucks are that get, that get brought in for, for repair. And I think that part of the concern, at least that I have, and perhaps the, the Planning Commission was, you know, the, the drafts of the pictures of the renditions that we got show what looked like brand new. Some I parked there, but I bet they don't look like that. So as you're driving down Hornsby, I think the intent was, is there a way to break up that, that view? And maybe it's not that bad. Maybe they really like, yes, they have bent frames, but you'd never know that if you drove by them. So could, could you just give us a sense of kind of what the appearance of the trucks typically are that you do work on? And, and if they're, you know, if, if a person was to drive by there, would it look like a bunch of trucks waiting to be fixed? Or would it look like a bunch of trucks just parked there? Or a mix?
I guess I would have to answer, there, there could be a mix. There, there could be everything from worst case scenario, a crashed truck or, or a trailer that had been rolled over that needs to be straightened, to the prettiest equipment that you'll see on the highways, to fire trucks, to whatever type of vehicle. So it, it can be very wide ranging. Sue mentioned going by the existing truck align facility. I'm not sure when that was, but if you look at the equipment around there, there is, there is a fence around that one, but that's on a much smaller scale. There's a lot of stuff, well, normally there's several vehicles parked out front that, that's not fenced in. There is, there's a large amount of work that goes on at that facility, but I hope you certainly didn't see a disaster there.
No, and it wasn't very busy. And that was today I drove by.
Okay. I did notice I went by there today my own self and, and I was surprised at the lack of equipment sitting in there. They, they were all inside, but well, there was some out back, but not out front like normal. So again, there, there are variations to what we'll see.
Okay. So, so you know, I guess what I was thinking, and again, we, you know, we're not trying to design anything for you, but what I was thinking is that if you could put something so that as you drive down Hornsby, it doesn't have to be invisible, it doesn't have to be that, doesn't have to be as invisible as the example that I gave you, but even if you had a few panels of fence in between conifers, in between some, you know, deciduous trees, I mean, as you're driving down there, you're not, your eye isn't going to be picking up all the, you might see some truck shapes behind there and stuff, but you're not going to see a bunch of trucks that may or may not look pretty beat up, sitting there waiting for, to be repaired. So I, I think that was the intent. And I think that Commissioner King was right, that what we saw, at least in the pictures, doesn't really adequately screen that. So I don't know if you've had any more thoughts or chance to think about that, but I just wanted you to understand, I think, what the intent was, that we weren't, we weren't trying to do your landscaping. This wasn't sort of like to beautify the, the property. It was more to just camouflage what might be some beat up looking trucks from the people that are driving down. And however you can do that, I think, you know, would be fine with us.
Let me add, if everybody looks on page 43 of this packet, I see a bunch of regular deciduous trees. So that means the leaves are going to fall off. So half the year you're going to see straight through. Would you be willing to turn those into Christmas trees? So as they mature, that gives you a better, that breaks up the, and I don't know how you, who does this? Does the planner do it?
Landscape architect? It's going to be a landscape architect. I'm sure you've got one.
So can there be something adjusted to that? Get rid of the maple trees or whatever they are? Put in a few more Christmas trees that will have good coverage all year long? And then, and what about, so of course there will be some trucks that were hit by trains and there will be many that are just, need their wheels adjusted or whatever. Can you park the good ones towards the highway, towards Hornsby Street? And if the really bad ones, the train wrecks are up by the building, the trucks that are parked out beyond would be camouflaging. We have one picture here on page 41, 42. And it shows decent looking trucks parked up against Hornsby Street. So that would help camouflage the, the ones that really need the extra work. And maybe between the two of the, between the Christmas tree switch and the decent looking vehicles parked against Hornsby. That would cover up whatever ugliness there is from the ones that really need to be heavily repaired. On page 44, we have a drawing with some Christmas trees, some deciduous, some decent looking trucks parked there. And in my mind, that would be a pretty good thing without doing too much more landscaping. And that can just be an issue that you bring up with your people. Who parks where and what? Anybody else?
I have a few comments. One is that the concept for the highway district, we worked really hard on that. We talked ad nauseam on what the zoning should be. It was supposed to be something where people want to get off the highway and come to Columbus, a known quantity at this point, because our name is on the bridge. We had certain things that we wanted done in that area, where we wanted to improve the area and make it look inviting to come off the highway. When we were presented with Loves, I was adamant that they not turn it into a truck stop, because I wanted people to feel that they could get off the highway and, and come to the track and hopefully something on the northeast corner of our, our quadrant. Adding another trucking firm to this makes me feel like we're going in a direction that I, I feel really uncomfortable with. And I have not had a chance to really talk about that until this point. I did know that when we had the, the preliminary concept meeting, I, I was against the idea of having a trucking firm in there. The, the fact that you want to have the building white, which we have not traditionally allowed that in that area since we did the zoning, and we had a real ruckus over having a white building for one of our other existing businesses, Bear Homes. They were forced to change the color so that it wasn't quite so fluorescent white and would not be sticking out in the landscape of Columbus. I don't believe that having white buildings with red stripes on a trucking firm is let's same as having, Bear Homes have a small blue area to their building, or McDonald's having their arches and that type of thing. I think that, that, that particular item got glossed over because we said, well, we want you to be able to hide things. Well, you can't hide this, that size of a building. When Viking came in to our area and they were in the general area, they also had white on their building and they generously changed the colors to match the, the surrounding area so that it didn't, you know, stick out. It's a beautiful building and they have accents that make it stand out, but, but they did change it. And I think, and I challenge anybody to go up there and look at that building versus even Bear Homes, which Bear Homes did, you know, tone down the white. But I feel like we are making exceptions for this that are leading us down a dangerous path. One of the things that I'm really concerned about is that we actually asked people from, from Blaine Brothers, you know, why there are so many places for trucks? And it just seemed like it was really excessive for the business. And we were answered by saying, well, we don't have an app that allows people to stay, you know, at our place or park their, their trucks there. That didn't answer the question. The question is, if you are going to be developing your business organically, does that mean you're going to then be able to eventually work it into like a truck parking situation? We know what, there's articles in the Minneapolis Tribune, there's articles everywhere about how the truckers are not able to get places to park. We, in putting Loves in, we gave them a place to park. So my feeling is that Columbus has done their business as a fringe, as a fringe community to, you know, address that. And Love, Loves authors us, you know, restaurants and a place for people to get off and, and explore, you know, part of Columbus. It's a good add-in to the track. We were also told, you know, well, why do you allow the, the track to go and have lights up and that sort of thing? You can't even come close to what the track has given to Columbus. The taxes alone are, are, are bread and butter. And then besides the fact, they're a good neighbor. They constantly come to us and offer, you know, little, little perks for the, the community that they don't have to do. So there is no comparison between Blaine Brothers and Loves, and there is no comparison between Blaine Brothers and the track. In conclusion, I want to mention the fact that the city planner has made mention that we are now setting precedent and that if that's what we want in Columbus, that's what we're going to get. We're going to get a truck center. We're going to have trucks coming down Lake Drive. We're going to have trucks being fixed on Lake Drive. We're going to have trucks being fixed, you know, along the highway. And that's what we're going to be known for. And I think we've worked really hard to make that quadrant important and something that we wanted to represent Columbus. And I just don't know that this is the direction that we should have taken. And it's gone a long way down this road before I was able to make some kind of comment. And I'm sorry that it comes so late. But I, I feel like I would not be representing the people of Columbus if I did not say this. So that's all I have to do.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just want to make one comment kind of related to that, Shelley. And I know that, you know, it has been a concern of not just people on the council and the Planning Commission of all the trucks in Columbus. But I did go to our ordinance to look, you know, what exactly, how does, how does something like this qualify? How would we be able to say no? And there really isn't. I mean, our ordinance says vehicles and there's no definition of what a vehicle is. A vehicle is something that transports, doesn't give the size or anything. So, I mean, that's what our ordinance is. And that's what we have to, that's how I base my decision. And I know I, you know, I could discourage it, but that's what our ordinance is. And I feel like they've done a really good job. I thought you did a really good job on your documentation and everything that you've done, you know, working with the city and the planners and all of that. So, and I think you're a great reputable company. So I guess, you know, I'm, I'm a little bit torn too, just because of that, the trucks. And I think in the first place, we, when we listened to your, the concept plan, we didn't hear 20 to 30 trips per day. And when I heard that last, I don't know if it was last week or the week before, I thought, wow, that's a lot of trucks. But it's in an area that is, it's not affecting the community in the way that, like for example, Lake Drive is. That area is, it's right off the freeway. They're going to come, they're going to go by Loves and those other little businesses there, and then they're going to get back on the freeway. So I mean, I just don't feel like the impact is as hard on the entire community as some of the other areas is.
Well, I, my, I disagree because when the asphalt company went in, they cut down a bunch of trees and that increased the noises that we get from the, the highway. And I think that having additional truck traffic coming specifically to be fixed or to be staying overnight is going to be a problem. I don't think that it's going to, I don't think our intent was ever to have it as a parking lot for trucks. And I have not been convinced that it's not going to be used as that. And I may be proved wrong and in three years you can let me know. But as far as the way you turn this down is you, you know, from the very beginning, you say, this doesn't seem to fit. Certainly we don't allow a white building in, in the area. We had wanted it to stay neutral coming up the highway. And at minimum, the color should not be any brighter or any lighter than what we held the Bear Homes to. It's just not, it's not fair to them. Because we, we made a big deal. It cost them a lot of money. So those are the reasons why I would say no.
Let me ask, I think you had told us at the last Planning Commission meeting that you do not intend to have people parking there and living there and staying overnight. Is that still the case?
That is true. That's correct. Where they will not, that's not what we're, that's not what we have that parking lot for. There is a need for truck parking. There's no question. That is not what we intend this lot to be used for.
And I appreciate that they put in the new wording about not sleeping in your truck, but that isn't what the problem is. The problem is people don't have a place to park their trucks.
Right. That's why they're parked on Minneapolis streets and all over downtown.
Right. And so now, you know, there's been an article about the fact that it would be really nice if people would have, you know, a, a parking lot for people to drive to, drop their trailer off or whatever, and then come and get their trailer when they need it. And that's what I'm having a problem with. You have a lot of place for cars also, and I, I have a hard time seeing, you know, that that many places are needed for educational purposes. So I'm just saying that even if your intent right now is, is pure, I see in the future a lot of morphing. And I'm the council member that always uses that word, morphing. And I just, I just feel like the amount of land that's used, the, the amount of pavement that's used to house trucks, and now you're saying that sometimes the trucks aren't looking so great and everything, that's what you're going to see coming up the highway. So I'm just saying that that's, I, if we do this, then there is no reason why. All the other trucking companies, and we've had other people that are interested in Lake Drive too, come up here and we will be trucking central. And if that's what Columbus wants to be, I understand. And it, and it'll get us some money. You know, we were told by our banker that we only had to increase our base by 5% a year, and we've far outstripped that. And the problem is, when we outstripped it, we also are losing land because we don't have that much left to develop. So I just, I just want to say, I mean, the city planner has basically caved to the trucking idea. And if that's what is wanted, I just can't vote for that because I, I promised the people that the truck traffic would go down in Columbus.
But again, it's not affecting Columbus. It's on the Forest Lake side. And also here's a $10 million building that will be what everybody sees from everywhere. And you don't pay for a building like that without a parking lot and without customers who are using the services offered. And we've been pretty reassured. Everything we've asked for was agreed to. And I understand your concerns. I really do. But it's zoned for that. Even the parking, the car parking, that's Columbus zoning, that requires them to have that many car park spots there. You know, he could sell that property and build a coffee shop next to it. It would be better off than having 200 car park spots. But our regulations require, whatever the numbers are, that he has it. And, and I hope you're busy enough in five or 10 years that every spot is full and business is good, because then we know you can pay your taxes. So anything else from anybody?
I think the only other thing I want to say is I remember you saying, Dean, that your white actually has gray tones in it. And one of the things that was helpful when we were working with Bear Homes was we actually got a brick that was painted so you could actually kind of see how bright it was. Their first white was really bright white and the second white wasn't so bright. And I wish I would have thought of this before, but I mean, that might, you know, swage some of your concerns, Shelley, if you saw it and it wasn't bright white, it was more in line with what you had, you know, settled with, with, with Bear Homes. If I'm remembering that wrong, please correct me, but I thought you said that it wasn't pure white, it was some very light shade of gray put in with the white to kind of tone it down.
I, I should have also thought about that earlier and maybe brought it, brought a sample. If I'm not mistaken, I don't want to be quoted on this, but I believe that the name, the paint name has gray in it. Again, don't quote me on that, but it's.
Right. So, I mean, I, I don't disagree with the problem with trucks, but I don't consider your business a trucking business. I would disagree with that categorization. And because they are being brought there, they're being repaired, they're being brought off, and the location of it being in such close proximity to the freeway, I, I agree with Sue that it's not, it's not going to pose a hardship like trucking companies that are going in and out, you know, with the asphalt plant 500 times a day or, you know, roaring through residential parts of our, of our city to get to Lake Drive. So I, I don't have that same concern. I do think that if you could, you know, figure out some way to break up the view of the parked vehicles for waiting to be repaired, that would be, that would be a big plus. That's, and I think that that would go a long way towards, at least, you know, the only concern that I have. I also want to commend you because the one thing that I did hear that I thought was really generous is, was the training programs that your, that your company offers. And so I think you're, you're well on your way to being a good citizen, just based on the fact that you're investing in kids that are trying to get into the trades and providing a place for them to do internships and learn how to do that. So.
Anything else, anyone?
Mr. Mayor and council members, the applicant has presented two new renderings. You have a, a rendering before you and I'm not sure who would be able to explain, but I can briefly go over what Dean wrote me in the email. So if I need any corrections, please, please welcome, I'll welcome any comments. He's indicated that there are new renderings for architectural plans that show the roof cast. cap in a dark prefinished metal, not white. And he'd indicated that he wasn't gonna be at the meeting, but he wanted the rendering to come before you, because it has to be, those changes have to be accepted by the city council, and those would be the new architectural plans. So if there's something I've missed in your plans that you've changed, I'm only aware of the top roof panels, or the prefinished metal panels.
And Mr. Mayor and council, when you're ready to make a motion, you should reference revisions dated 12/27/22. That's at the bottom of the plans that were handed out. There's two sides to that plan.
I did have one other question. When I was looking at the findings of facts, it references still, at least the most recent version I have, the eight-foot, what is it called, like an eight-foot brick wall, that I thought Dean had said that wasn't going to be there? So my question is, is that supposed to be there or not? It says, "Site plan also reveals an eight-feet-tall precast screening walls north and south of the easterly building elevation." And I thought, I remember him saying that that wasn't going to be part of the site plan. Do you remember? Or is that, and he was referring to it related to the gate, because he changed some of the wording on the entrance gates, so maybe it was just specific to that. But I thought, if it's not gonna be in there, we should get it out of there, since it's part of what we're gonna hold you accountable to.
I believe the renderings and plans that you have before you now do reflect our, I guess, latest revision. Elizabeth just mentioned the roof cap. You'll notice just the, just the roof cap over the top. It was drawn in on the original drawing as dark.
Mm-hmm.
On this one that you received yesterday, I believe, or today, it is a white cap. It's, it does go along with everything our other buildings. That's why I asked them to make that change. If we have to go with the dark cap, that's not my preferred, but it does still tie in with all of the stone and dark windows and...
The dark cap is what's shown. That's what, I'm sorry. The dark cap is what's shown, and that's what Dean reviewed.
Okay, the, the, I believe the rendering's showing. Yeah, okay, see. Do you all have these?
Yes. All the councilmen.
You all have these in there?
Yep.
Okay, if I can explain then. So the center cap is black. If you look beyond that, the lower portion of the roof, it is white above the red stripe. The black in the center top cap would not change, only on the, so above truckaline, the signage.
Mm-hmm.
That black cap would not change. And in fact, we might, well, the white, the white stripe out the edges would be our preferred. That's what this was sent today. Again, it matches our other facilities. It's not a big change at all. It's...
Four inches over the top?
Or six? Six inches down the front is the roof cap.
Mr. Mayor and council, just so everybody's clear, both the applicant and the city council, that by submitting this revision, if the council approves it, this is what will be built, right? So unless you come back and amend it. So we wanna be clear that by submitting it, if the council approves it, this is the plan.
Mm-hmm.
And that's exactly why I wanted to get this in. I apologize for the last minute, but again, just showing the white, so there wasn't any question later.
But do you know, is, is the eight-foot-tall precast screening walls north and south, is that still part of the site plan?
Yes, it is. From, from the interstate view, on the north and south side of the building, there are screening walls.
Yep.
On the east side entry gate off of 150th, there were screening walls drawn in there.
Okay.
With the way the gates, the way we want them to function, their, their code in and out. We would not be able to have the screening walls there where the gates have to sit.
Okay.
There isn't room with the parking and the rest to have.
Okay, so that was the part that he took out, was on the easterly side?
Correct.
Okay.
The east side gates, yes.
Okay.
And there was a center island added in there to, again, accommodate the gates and the, and the code.
Okay. Okay.
So let's go back to our drawing here. So what the change is, is that this line, this top cap has become black. We're on the bottom of page BB1.
That was, Mr. Mayor, that was shown black on the original drawing. The entire top cap was shown black.
Right. Then you have the red going across, and then white behind your red truck line, name above the front doors.
Correct.
It's, it's black here. It was black. Now he wants it white.
It was black, he wants it white.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Does everybody understand all of that? I got it. Go back to Janet's question. You're still going to have the eight-foot precast screening walls on the north and the south of the easterly portion elevation. That all stays the same?
North and south, but not easterly.
But not easterly. Okay.
So the finding as written is accurate.
It's correct, yeah.
Mm-hmm. So is there anything we haven't asked, councilor?
No, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just, it warrants, since this plan's been offered as revision, it warrants some discussion at the council whether it's acceptable or not.
Anybody object to the white above the red?
I would've preferred black.
Do you have a picture of what the black, I, I don't remember, I didn't ever remember that it was black. I was trying to find if we had a picture of it, and I don't see a picture of it.
Hold on. There it is right there. Okay, I got one here.
Do you? Is it in that big packet that you had?
Yes, sir.
I got it. No. It's good enough.
That's this one, right?
Okay, so...
I don't think it's a big, big difference.
And that's right above the red. It's not white.
Because we still have all the black above here.
I know.
And just have a question on why, why did you change that little bit to white from black? Is there a reason?
Our guys could answer probably better than I can. I'm very, very particular on many different things about our buildings, our trucks, and our businesses. Again, it's how I've preferred the look over the years, and we have made, again, many other changes to this already in regards to the, the additional windows, the dark Not that any of us, not that any of these adjustments hurt us, but it is slightly different. Again, all of our buildings have that white roof cap on them, and I tell our people I have different things going on in my head that aren't always, so.
Okay. I don't have a problem with the white.
Yeah, I don't either. I have one other question for Elizabeth or Bill. So to Shelley's concern about trucks that might end up being parked there, maybe not slept in, but parked there, it looks to me that the way that Dean has worded the, the conditions and the findings, we're eliminating that possibility. Is that your read too, or does that need to be strengthened to address that concern? I mean, he's, in the findings, he's like, he says, "Truck and trailer parking on the property is limited to customer-owned trucks and trailers that are being serviced at truckaline and towing vehicles. No trucks or trailers are stored on the property for sale or salvage." And then in the conditions, the recommended conditions, he kinda restates that same, that same language. "All truck, truck and trailer parking on the property," this is number 12 of the conditions, "shall be limited to temporary parking associated with repair of customer trucks and trailers. Customers shall not be permitted to sleep in or otherwise occupy trucks or trailers while waiting for service repair." So this really prohibits what Shelley is concerned about, is that correct? As long as we enforce it?
Yep. Mr. Mayor and council, I would agree, it's tightly written. The thing that is not provided for in there is just random parking, so parking for parking purposes. You know, my view of this would be, you would have a code enforcement action or a condition enforcement action if, if you found that people were just parking there and not customers and not, not being repaired. Anybody staying overnight wouldn't be allowed.
Right.
That could be enforced against. So I, I think the condition's well-written.
Okay, thank you.
All right, everyone, I'll make the motion to approve Bladen Brothers Truck Line CUP for a PUD, subject, subject to conditions 1 through 22 of the planner's report dated 12/22/2022, and the, and the revision dated 12/27/22 of the city engineer's comments listed on the report dated 12/02/2022.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Did I say it correctly?
Yep.
Yes. All right. And is there a...
All right, this is Sue, I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Now, anybody else have anything else to say?
I do. I just wanna say, is there a way that we can, I, I don't see what the planning commission asked for, which was more, more screening. So, and I don't, I'm happy to delegate that to the staff to work with you on that, but can we add that to the motion so that that doesn't get forgotten?
Sure. Mr. Mayor and council, with reference to the landscaping condition, you can add, "as approved by city staff." And I'm scrambling to see where that is. I see the approval, I think it's condition 11, but with, I think if you just add that to the, the motion...
Or number 10, the one read before it, I think, the screening plan.
Right. Either one.
Okay.
But "as approved by city staff," and then we'll have to sign off at this level.
I mean, I'm feeling, Elizabeth, you guys have a sense of what we're looking for, right?
Yes.
Okay. I don't wanna hold you up, but I would like to see more. You can work it out with her. You need to amend your motion, if you agree with that.
And so we'll amend the motion to include...
Landscaping plan as approved by city staff.
Here, here. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
All right, I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, nay.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
And to be clear, it's probably screening and landscaping. It's a combination of both, so.
Yep.
Right.
All right.
And I know everybody knows the speaker, but just for our, our record, your name, sir?
Dean Dally.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Start planting those Christmas trees. All right, moving right along.
That was quick.
That was quick. Well, it's been...
Onto number two.
Been eight months, so.
Ron still has more time.
All right. Go ahead, Ron.
All right. The second item on the agenda was a public hearing concerning the commercial industrial district moratorium amending city code 7A in the CI district on Lake Drive. And I would first like to thank the Assistant City Attorney Megan Morgans, I mean, Megan Rogers, for her work and guidance in leading us through this process. As the council knows, it was a long process, and since all the council viewed the public hearing on December 21st, I will not bore you with line by line and get to the facts. There were three issues that night, I think, that stood out in the public hearing, and we adjusted them, and I see they were readjusted by the city attorney in that letter, I think he wrote on the 23rd of December in your packet. But the first one that we came to is, the first was in section 7A 750, commercial industrial CI light outdoor display and screening. I don't know if you have it near packet, but on 68 of the, page 68 of the packet, item B, outdoor storage limitations and requirements, line number four, "The outdoor storage was set at 30% of the site excluding retail products sold outdoors and fleet vehicles. The commission did not see any issue in bringing that percentage up to 50%." The second issue is in regard to section 7A 801, page 69 of the packet. Discussion was about setbacks from the CI light districts to the rural residential area. That was 10 feet, but the commission agreed to move it back to the original 35 feet, with the understanding that two businesses are butting each other, and the CI light district would have a setback of 10 feet. And there was also a clause in ordinance on page 69 in the section 7A 824, "Performance standards for contractor shops with contractor yard limit." Item A was removed, which stated spacing requirements. "No contractor shop with accessory contractor yard limited shall be located less than a quarter of a mile from another contractor shop with accessory contractor yard limited." The commission, the commission did not think this was an issue. So those are the three issues, I think, that were discussed that night that gained a little motion from the public hearing. And I know a lot of you were on, on video that night, but I think that the public hearing went pretty good, and that the public was pretty well in tune with the changes that were going on. And as you are aware, the planning commission voted unanimously to approve the changes to 7A of city code and zoning map amendment CI in the district. A lot of talk in there. Unless you've seen something else, that's about the three issues, I think, that night. And I think the quarter of a mile, or was it three quarters of a mile?
Quarter of a mile.
Quarter of a mile. I think that came up as an option, and was placed in there, I think.
What I remember of that was, we were offered that when we were concerned about expansion of heavy-use businesses. And I'd suggested that we could adopt a performance standard like we did in the LI district over, in the freeway district, that in that area, we don't allow another asphalt concrete production facility within two miles of the existing one. So I said, well, we could do something similar. I think Megan came back with the quarter-mile suggestion, and then after that, I think Bill swaged our fears about, about creating non-conformities by saying we could allow any business that had a valid CUP in effect at the time we adopted this ordinance to continue on as conforming, which then eliminated the need of having that quarter-mile thing. So I think that was just left over, and it doesn't need to be in there anymore. That's the way I remember it.
Mr. Mayor and council, that's correct. Once, once the existing businesses were legally grandfathered rather than grandfathered as non-conforming uses, the spacing requirement wasn't needed, because the direction of the council is, you didn't want contractor shops established other than as allowed today.
Right.
So we found a different solution than spacing. Everybody who's got a valid CUP as of tonight will continue as a legally conforming use, and that allows them to get financing and refinance and sell their properties and not have to identify it as non-conforming. So then the spacing requirement's not...
Right.
Then what protects us against having the heavy, heavier uses in that non-light?
Because it's not, it's not...
Because it's not, it's not listed as a permitted or a conditional use, so if it's not listed, it's not permitted.
It's no longer allowed.
Unless, unless the council decides they want to permit it. Is that correct?
The council would have to amend the code. There would have to be a code amendment to allow it.
All right.
The door is essentially shut, other than those businesses that are already existing.
I did have one question kind of related to that, though, in, so when I look at the, when I look at the list of conditional uses, it lists, let's see if I can find it here. It talks about the, the, some of the uses that we aren't allowing, but it qualifies conditional, contractor shop with accessory contractor yard operating pursuant to an approved conditional use permit in the CI district on or before December 28th. So, I get that. The one thing I wasn't sure of, and I brought this up with Elizabeth, is that there's a couple of trucking terminals down near the mixed use, and it's, they're not listed. I don't know what we categorize those as. I call them trucking terminals. I don't know what the real category is, but I don't think the category is listed here, and they aren't called out as having been, if they were legally established, they continue to be legally established. And I just didn't want, I just want clarification on was that purposeful or did we just miss that?
So, looking at, looking at the conditional use permits, the two businesses that were brought up, we, we looked at their conditional use permits. We determined that we are going to determine the use by what is recorded on the property. And in the one case, it's not recorded as a truck terminal, it's recorded as a contractor shop with yard. And looking at its use, it is listed under C, as in Charlie, under contract shop with contractor yard limited.
Okay.
The other one is actually, is actually listed as not a contractor yard, but a building trade office, along with vehicle repair and service. So, because there are three uses recorded on the property, two of which are on the list for conditional use, and the other one contractor yard, we felt that they would fit. The one item that is, will be presented differently, will be homes. So, I, there, we talked through this. If someone uses a home as a residence on Lake Drive, and they want to add another room, in other words, expand the footprint, adopting this ordinance makes them legal non-, they're legal non-conforming today, and when you adopt this ordinance, they're still going to be legal non-conforming. If they come to you and they say, "We want to add a room," they're going to use the variance process. They're not going to use the conditional use permit process. If it's a commercial business, and they happen to be legal non-conforming, they will use the conditional use permit process, and then the council will determine whether you feel the expansion is appropriate or not. And if you feel it's appropriate, you're going to grant the expansion, and if you feel that it doesn't meet the criteria that we've listed out, then, then you would indicate to them that you didn't think the expansion met the criteria of the ordinance. So, you've had, you have a couple carve-outs, depending on what the situation is, and depending on what the situation is, we'll take that route.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, and this was the discussion that Elizabeth had with Megan Rogers, and then I had with Megan Rogers. So, we vetted all three of these instances. We feel comfortable with the direction in your adoption of this tonight. To be clear, anybody who has an existing home, and they want to use it for commercial purposes, they not only have to meet the zoning code, but they also have to meet the building code.
Yep.
And so, that may require the building be sprinkled, it may require other life safety improvements. So, it's not an easy thing to convert a residence to a commercial use. Just to be clear.
So, then Elizabeth, just for my own clarification, what I recall in the past is when a legally non-conforming residential property wants to do more than just maintenance. I, I, I mean, I don't, we've struggled with that because when you're talking about a variance, there has, has to meet the six criteria. So, it seems to me like it would, they wouldn't be able to get a variance either. I mean, which is okay with me. I mean, I get that we're not, we're trying to not have more investment in residential property there because it just creates conflicts with the commercial property. But I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure I understand. It's, it's the same as it's been in the past, when people have wanted to expand. They have, they will be faced with the same challenges that we've had in the past.
Yes, that is correct. They will be faced, same challenges, same hardship, practical difficulty is standard. I think the last one had indicated that, you know, if you didn't do the repairs, because it was beyond the, the amount, you know, in the ordinance, it was going to cause, you know, severe hardship. And I think you granted that variance. So, I think, depending on the circumstances, will determine whether they meet the hardship criteria.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor and Counsel, just to maybe put a fine point on this part of the discussion, the council and the planning commission, in giving its direction on this, this portion of the discussion, made it clear that you wanted existing commercial businesses to have a way to continue to be legally conforming, to even have the opportunity to expand. You did not provide that same opportunity for residential structures because the intent of the city for at least 20 years has been to phase those out on Lake Drive.
Correct.
Correct.
Thank you. So, would someone like to start making the motions?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, I, I would like you to, you have a handout that's dated on December 23rd, and on the second and third pages are the motions. And to start off on the second motion, it's, it will not be 2212, it'll be 2213. So, the first motion does identify with 2211. Second motion identifies with 2213. The next motion is 2214. And then you're going to have resolution 3940 and 41.
I didn't get all that because I just found the page.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. So, the first motion, looking at the numbers, it's going to be 2211. The second motion is not going to be 2212, it's going to be 2213.
Okay.
And then the next one is 2214. And the last three are resolutions, and those numbers are 39, 40, and 41. They do have to go in this order.
Okay. I did want to make one comment, though, before we start all the motioning. I know that this was a painful process for a lot of people, but I just wanted to thank our Assistant Attorney Megan and the planning commission for a lot of hours of reviewing and changing and taking public feedback. I think they did a great job, and I think we have accomplished what we wanted to in a very short amount of time. So, I just wanted to thank everybody who worked on that.
And I just, I just have a couple of questions that are more, I don't know, formatting or typo kinds of things. Do you want me to do that now or do it offline?
They should be done now, so they're part of the record.
Okay, so, then I will go back to, so on the first, it doesn't have a page number on here, but the first page where it starts with the ordinance number 20-11, there's a typo on, on section one, the first line. I think it's meant to say "by deleting those" words, and it says "toes" words.
I'm sorry.
And then, this is more, more an education for me. So, we use the word implement in a lot of these things, and then sometimes we use farm implement, and sometimes we use regular implement. I'm not aware of any farm implement. I mean, nobody sells combines or things like that, but we do have a business that sells, you know, big, larger sort of lawn tractors and landscaping equipment and things like that. So, so in the, in the definitions, we have automotive trailer, travel trailer, farm, implement, and construction machinery sales. And I wondered whether you want to see farm or lawn care or landscaping, because I, I don't know, maybe I don't know the definition of a farm implement, but I just think of those as big combines and tillers and things like that, not what-
Why don't we just strike the word farm?
Or just put implement, yeah.
Yeah, implement works.
And then make it, and then make it consistent throughout. And then, we have a definition for CI light district, but we don't have one for just the CI district unless we have it and it just isn't included here because it exists and we weren't changing it?
That's correct. It exists.
All right.
Yep.
And I didn't go back to check that. Then on page, they're, sorry, these aren't page-numbered.
If you can use sections?
Section 7A 744, on the mineral extraction. Do we need to have that be subject to the ordinance that talks about that? Don't we have an ordinance that just-
It doesn't need to be subject to because if the ordinance, the performance standards for mineral extraction would apply.
Okay.
Whether or not it's referenced.
All right, then on the next page where it's going through all of these headings, say, "Commercial Industrial," then there's a big space, and then it says, "CI Light." Should there be "light" after the "commercial industrial" word in each of these sections? It starts in 7A 748, "Commercial Industrial Light," but then after that, it just says "commercial industrial," big blank, "CI Light."
The term is defined in the first reference, 7A 746, there's a parenthetical that shortens it to CI-light. In my, just quick glance is that it's used as CI-light then after that reference.
I just think it's confusing because you just have "commercial industrial," which is what we call the east side of the road. And I think the word "light" should be after that, or we should just use the abbreviated CI-light.
So, it is right. The way she said it is right.
Does that make sense?
Yes, makes sense to me.
Okay. And then my other, so the other question I had is when it says, so now I'm on section 7A 747 on Y. When it says, "Expansion of non-conforming uses subject to the standards in section," is that section 7A 481? I know right now it just says XX, but I just was wanting to make sure that I was going back to the right section.
I'm looking for the, where are you in the-
So, it's section 7A 747, and then if you go down to Y, under there, it says, "Expansion of non-conforming uses subject to the standards in section 7AXXX." And I'm thinking it's 7A 481, which is defined earlier in this ordinance, but I didn't know if that was true, or-
Yeah, we'll fill that in.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to understand the, the reference. So, if that's the reference, then I understand it. If it's a different reference, then I just-
No, that's correct.
Okay, all right. Let me think if there's anything else. And then my other question is, so we have performance standards for the CI light. Do we have performance standards for just the CI district, but they're just not in here because we don't?
They're existing standards.
Existing standards, okay.
Yep, so they're in the code, but not in the amendment.
All right. And then, now I am on, you can tell I really paid attention to this, right?
Yeah, this is good. I like them, clean as we can get them.
That's how boring my life has been lately. Okay, section 7A 824, "Performance Standards for Contractor Shops with Contractor Yard," and it says, "Dash Limited," but then underneath, the "limited" part is crossed off. So, and that carries through, so I don't, I don't, I think it shouldn't be crossed off.
Well, the, I think the intent is that there should not be, based on the council's action tonight, there will not be new contractor shops, other than limited.
But, so underneath that heading, it says, "All Contractor Shops with Accessory Contractor Yard," and then it says, "Limited," crossed out, "Established after," so I mean, the part that's confusing is that there would be no limited contract yards because we haven't defined that. So, the only ones that would be established after December 28th, '22, would have to be limited, right? Because anything, I, I, I'm just-
Except that you have a provision that allows for the expansion of non-conforming uses. And I think Megan and I discussed this.
Okay.
And we agreed on the broader application to all contractors' yards. So, if someone has a contractor's yard, and they're under the exception, the December 28th exception, they have the opportunity to come to the council under the expansion provision for a CUP or PUD to expand an existing contractor's yard. And so, we wanted to make sure that these performance standards apply regardless whether it's contractor shop limited or it's an existing use expanding. So, we did, we did discuss that. So, the strike through is appropriate.
But then there's- But then should it be struck through in the heading, too?
Yes, then the heading should also have a strike.
Okay, that's, that's what I think.
Yeah, that's, that's where the confusion is.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
But we still need to have a definition of the limited because the definition is still there.
Yes, because contractor yards limited are still allowed.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
It's the heavy contractors with all the piles of stuff that are not, other, other than those established. And those established could come through for a CUP to expand that contractor's yard. It'll be up to the council whether that's an appropriate approval, but they have that opportunity. In this case, in that case, the performance standards would apply.
Okay, I'm getting close to the end of my list.
That's all right.
So, then my other question is, if you have a contractor shop, I'm sorry, yeah, contractor shop with a yard that's legally established today, and they're under, and they're under a CUP, can we impose these new performance standards on them? I thought you couldn't change anything in their CUP until they reopen the CUP.
Right, you, you can't impose them retroactively, but if they come in to expand what they have today-
Then they have to be under these.
Then they would be under the performance.
Okay, got it.
Yep.
All right, I think this might be my last one. So, on the next page, under outdoor storage, it says, "Outdoor Storage and Excavation as Permitted by Conditional Use Permit Shall Not Encroach on Any Required Setbacks or Landscape Yards." I don't understand. What do you mean, landscape yards? I get setbacks, it doesn't encroach on a setback, but what does landscape yards mean?
Well, oftentimes, the landscaping and the setback are in the same space. But if, if, for instance, the council would expand that landscape buffer for some reason, they can't, they can't store on top of the landscaping. The landscaping is kind of a clear zone.
Okay, I just wasn't sure what the definition of a landscape yard was. You're just saying the landscaping.
You know, and, and it could just be landscaping, if that's, if that makes more sense.
All right, I'm done. Thank you.
I just have one clarification, Bill. For 7A 824, the performance standards apply to both contractor yard limited and contractor yard. So, I don't think you want to take out limited. I think you want to put, you want to add. The, the performance standards apply to both.
Correct.
Okay.
And so, no, you're saying that if we strike limited, the interpretation might be that it doesn't apply to-
It doesn't apply to them, which I don't, I don't think-
I think what we'll do is, I think we'll just clean this up so it's clear that it applies to both.
It's both. That would be good.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Wasn't that enough? Yes.
All right, anybody else? Want to start reading, reading the motions, two pages?
I'll try. So, I would move to approve, oh, I'm sorry, move to adopt ordinance number 22-11. An ordinance amending city code revising or establishing use definitions creating a CI light district, including outdoor storage performance standards, amending the conditional uses within the existing CI district, adding use-specific performance standards for contractor yards, and allowing for expansion of non-conforming uses by conditional use permit and planned unit development application, thereby amending chapter 7A of the city code.
Is there a second?
This is Sue, all second.
Is there any other questions or discussions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Then I'll go on to say that I moved to adopt ordinance number 22-13, an ordinance directing staff to amend city zoning map to rezone the described properties from commercial industrial to commercial industrial light.
And this is Sue, all second.
Any other questions?
Any other questions? I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
And then moving on, I move to adopt ordinance number 22-14. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 22, 2022-05. Interim ordinance upon publication of ordinances 20, 20, 22-11 and 2022-12.
It'll be 13.
13, sorry.
And this is Sue, I'll second.
Any other discussion? I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
And I move to adopt resolution number 2022-39. Authorizing summary publication of ordinance number 22-11, amending the city code.
I'll second the motion. Any other questions? Call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
And move to adopt resolution number 2022 dash.
Forty.
Forty, thank you, I just wrote down four. Authorizing summary publication of ordinance number 22-12.
13.
13, sorry. Amending the city zoning map.
This is Sue, I'll second.
I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
And last but not least, move to adopt resolution number 2022-41. Authorizing summary publication of ordinance number 22-13.
14.
14, gosh.
I'll second that, I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye, on 2214.
Break out the champagne.
How is it? Everything good, Counselor?
Yes, congratulations.
We did.
You said you wanted to get done by the end of the year, and here we are.
Two days to go. All right.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you.
All right, Ron.
We got a seat with your name on it up here for next time.
Yep, thank you. All right, we are moving on to number 10 on our agenda. And this is regarding chapter 16C, ordinance 2208. Violations abatement code and chapter 5, public safety and public nuisance ordinance amendments, 2209. Two enclosures and our handouts. So Jessica's here to walk us through it.
Yeah, so Mayor and Council, we have been working through amendments to chapter 16C, which is our abatement code, as well as chapter 5, which is our public nuisance and public safety code. The council considered these amendments at our last meeting on December 14th. And at that time, there were minimal, if any, changes to chapter 16C and some more changes to chapter 5. So if we could just take chapter 16C, the most recent version is in the enclosure that was provided to you all. You have a new version of chapter 5 that was handed out this evening. But with chapter 16C, this would be ordinance 2208, and there will have to be a second motion to approve the publication summary as presented. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
So Jessica, you said that we have a new, is it just because it's red now? Or it, there was, was there any changes?
Not to chapter 16C.
Okay.
There were a couple changes, I believe, from Councilmember Logren's comments to chapter 5.
To chapter 5.
But let's just maybe stay on 16C first. See if there's any questions regarding that one.
Okay, so 16C.
Is abatement.
Okay, nope, I didn't have any questions on that one.
And this one really was just kind of cleaning up the language, making sure we're referencing the correct Minnesota statutes, making sure that we include all of the sections of chapter 5 that we want to be able to abate, and, and cleaning up the process for issuing an abatement order.
Thanks.
I just, I actually looked at this really quickly, but I just want to make sure I understand. So does this amended chapter 16C now allow us to abate for nuisances? I mean, before we were limited, but I didn't really see that in the application.
If you look at section 16102, section A talks about the specific sections of chapter 5 that chapter 16C applies to.
Okay.
So the specific sections of chapter 5 that we can use the abatement process to handle.
Okay.
So that's kind of why we did 16C and chapter 5 together, because we wanted to make sure that we're referencing the appropriate sections of chapter 5 within chapter 16C so that we can use the abatement process to handle those nuisances. And previously, specifically, we wanted to add section 5-300 from chapter 5 into this, and we did. And then we noticed there's a few other things we should change in the ordinance and, as it happens, so.
Okay. Ready for motion? So I would move to adopt ordinance 22-08, amending chapter 16C. Violations abatement code as presented.
This is Sue, I'll second.
Any questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
And then I would move to approve publication summary for ordinance 22-08 as presented.
I'll second that. Any questions? I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
Great, thank you. So we'll move on to chapter 5. This is our public nuisance and public safety chapter. There were, there was pretty significant conversation and discussion with the council. Specifically, I believe it was our December 1st, around that time workshop. We really went through line by line and talked about all of the changes that we wanted to see. I believe the most changes were made to section 5-300, just editing language. And there were also some considerable edits to section 5-500. Beyond that, we added sections regarding parking and vehicle storage and inoperable motor vehicles. Tonight before you, there is an extra handout that has additional language that Councilmember Logren identified that we've included. So on section 5-300E, there has been a sentence added saying that animals chemically euthanized must be prior to burial stored in a way to prevent poisoning scavengers. And when animals are buried, they shall not be buried closer than 50, 50 feet from a well to kind of present, prevent any poisoning of a well. And then the other concern that we identified was on 5-300J as amended. We added the, section J identifies decaying matter as a nuisance. And we had added a note, including the exception of managed compost piles. And after some discussion, we wanted to further narrow that to only compost piles that are located at least 100 feet from any property line to prevent compost piles or piles of decaying matter piling up on a property line, being excluded from the list of public nuisances. And I know Shelley, those were your concerns specifically, so if you have anything to add on that, be happy to hear it or take any other questions from council members or mayor.
So I don't have any questions. I know that we did review it a lot, and in my notes, everything has been changed, updated to what we talked about. I did find one clerical. I think it's an error. Section 5-501B. No person shall place or throw on any street or right of way, it should be throw, I think.
Yep.
That's an easy one.
Got it.
And actually, I had a question on that section too, because it looked like it was redundant with what was already in 5-500Q and 5-500AA. Both of those things are already stated prior, so I wasn't sure if we needed to state them again.
Well, this one talks about nails, bottles, and things like that in Q.
No, it's AA that has the nails, bottles, and.
Which one?
AA. So 5-500AA says placing or throwing of, on any street sidewalk or other public property of any glass tacks, nails, bottles, or other substances that may injure any, any person or animal or damage any pneumatic tire when passing over such substance. Just pretty much the exact same wording that's in this, this new one. And the leaves and dirt and sand is in 5-500Q. This expands more on it, but it is already, I mean, we should just have it in one place or the other, not both, I think.
I would agree, AA does look identical to 5-501B. The question is maybe where it would be most appropriate to list. 505, 5-501 talks about the deposit of materials on city roads and streets is prohibited. My gut would be to maybe cross out double A and leave it as section 5-501B.
That makes sense to me. And then would you cross out 5-500Q and leave A under 5-501A?
Want to make sure that everything that was in Q is also in A, so. Does 5-01A talk about burning leaves, lawn clippings, et cetera?
I think, I think your 5-01A is better. So I would leave that, and I would just cross out Q from 500.
Q does include burning leaves.
Yeah, I've noticed that it doesn't, and it's not in A.
Lawn clippings. It seems maybe that 5-01A talks a little bit more about snow. Plow shovel, blow or otherwise deposit of snow onto any road. It does not talk about burning leaves, weeds, lawn clippings.
Well, it does, it says no person shall deposit or permit to be deposited on any public road, street, or right of way in the city of Columbus, leaves, grass, sand, dirt, ash, or other material.
Right. I, my intuition would be to add to 5-01A then lawn clippings and burning leaves specifically. And weeds. Because if we're going to cross off Q, I want to make sure we're not taking anything away.
Yep.
I think, I think Q though is getting at you can't burn leaves, not that you can't burn leaves in the street. I think it's just saying you can't burn leaves, right?
It's the throwing, placing, depositing, or burning leaves on roads. So.
Okay.
Yeah. Throwing, placing, depositing, or burning. So it's those actions of doing that to leaves, trash, lawn clippings, weeds, grass. So it seems like it's a little bit of a different intent.
I think the key is though it's in the road, because you can burn leaves on your property if you have a burn permit.
So what I'm thinking is you might, you can just combine what, combine them all, but how will we have it in one place?
Yeah, Q would be added to 5-501A.
Right, yeah.
And redundancies deleted.
Yep.
Okay. So we'll move Q down to 5-501A.
I had a question on section 5-500. It's more for Jim to answer, so I think I brought this up when we talked about it before. So right now it says, change, we changed the snow and ice being removed from public sidewalks from 24 hours to 48 hours. We don't have any sidewalks other than the ones that you guys clear, right? So do you clear them in 48 hours? So you might not want to have it as our ordinance if we can't follow it.
I think we, it's been a little while since I've looked at our snowfall policy, but I believe we address something about plowing sidewalks and things like that in some appropriate amount of time after a snowfall, so it's not our priority. I don't believe that we give it a timeline, though.
So how do you want to handle that? Because I just feel like right now, the only, only sidewalks that are public sidewalks are the responsibility of the city.
As per the policy?
Can't we just refer to the policy?
I think, I would prefer to see a specific number. If you don't think it's 48, then make it 72. But I don't think you want it indefinite, because there will come a time when somebody other than the city is plowing public sidewalks.
Yeah.
And we may not change this for 10 years or more.
Right, right.
So I think we pick a number that's reasonable. If it's not 48, 72, I wouldn't go much longer than that.
What if I don't get it done in 72 hours?
Well, then, you know, we're going to issue you a ticket.
And then, and then I'll just add it in with the bills and we're good.
Right.
I think, I think going much beyond that could create a hazard for, as we go forward. Let's say, you know, there's some development that has public sidewalks as a part of it. We want them to. We want them to shovel those walks.
Mm-hmm.
Even if Jim's tardy.
Well, I'll leave it up to you guys to figure out what the right number is, but that was my concern, which I was, I wanted to make sure 48 hours was still going to be livable for you, but it sounds like maybe not.
We potentially don't get them done within 48 hours, but it depends on what's happening. I mean, if it snows for three days straight, we're not going to, our priority is not sidewalks at that point. If you put 72 hours in there, because we need a timeline, I may or may not achieve that, but it's always our intention to get to them as soon as possible. If that makes sense.
Let's, let's lighten up to 72 and see if that works.
Okay.
Okay.
And then I also had a question about compost piles. Should there be a size limit? I mean, I think it's great that we have, you know, a definition related to property lines, but, I mean, I think most people compost have reasonable-sized compost, but you could have some gigantic compost piles that are really smelly and nasty, and I don't see anything in here that kind of protects us against that. And I don't know what size you would choose, but I even think about, you know, people who have several horses, if they compost the manure, which is really good practice, I'm all for it. It's going to be big and potentially smelly at first. So I don't, I mean, I don't know what the right answer is, I'm just calling that out as a whole.
Would we be covered in any of the other areas of the ordinance for smell?
I didn't see that we would, but.
Because, yes, I have seen a very large compost pile of horse manure, but it's, it's not offensive if it's not close to your house, and if it's not close enough to smell it. I mean, if you want to walk by it, then you take the risk of smelling it, but.
Right. No, I, I, I'm, again, I'm not against it at all, I just want to call it out, because we've had some complaints about smell of manure from people who are across the street from others that have large animals, and, you know, it's kind of, we haven't really had anything that we can do about it, and maybe we don't want to do anything about it, but we haven't really addressed it. And I was thinking about, I think Elizabeth, you mentioned once that we had a business that had composting, and that was like a big nightmare.
That's because they introduced grass that was bagged and then into the pile, and the ammonia scent wouldn't go away, and the neighbors were complaining every time they turned the piles.
So I don't know, I don't know, yeah, that's why I'm bringing these things up, but I don't have good answers for like how you define it so that it doesn't become a problem. If you define it by size, you define it by where it has to be, I don't know.
Two comments. In the list of, you know, public nuisances, we specifically accept managed compost piles, so we specifically allow them as not a nuisance. But then, under, oh, I think it's, oh, "All other acts, emissions, occupations, uses of property which are deemed by the council to be a menace to the health and inhabitants of the city are considered numbered here, or numbered there." So, you know, I guess if you have complaints, you've got, you've got a way to, to address it, it's pretty broad, but that, that would be kind of the catch-all for anything. Otherwise, we have to, I think we have to look into, you know, kind of the science of what's too big.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know that we're ready to do that here tonight, but.
Right.
But I, I'm comfortable that, oh, is the catch-all for anything where you get multiple complaints and there actually is a nuisance.
Okay.
Okay.
And then on Section 5-503, I guess, I wondered if we wanted to add alarm systems, only because there've been times where someone's home alarm system malfunctions and it goes off, and it doesn't go off, it doesn't stop. And, you know, if it happens once, it's one thing, but sometimes it happens multiple times because there's a short or there's something that's triggering it. So I didn't know if you wanted to add that to the list of noises that are problematic. A lot of people have alarm systems.
Are you referencing specifically to in, in 5-03A1?
Yes, and I would add, you know, in that list of radios, music devices, paging systems.
Alarm systems?
Yeah. It could be from a car, too. I mean, we've all been there where car alarms go off and they don't shut up. And then I also wanted to know, I was just reading, I can't remember if it was Minneapolis or St. Paul, but they just passed an ordinance about drag racing because they had a big problem with that. And I can tell you, in the summertime, you can hear people doing that here, too. I don't know if they're here in Columbus or there in Forest Lake, but I can hear it very easily. So I don't know, and, and the whole reason for them putting an ordinance was enforcement. They couldn't do anything about it because there was nothing prohibiting it, so I don't, you can look to see what words they used, but we do have that going on here.
I think it was Blaine, actually, that passed it, because I think they were doing drag racing in the parking, park and ride.
I think it was both, it was both places.
Yeah, I, that is something we would have to look into and read other cities' ordinances to see how to bring that in here. I'm not prepared to add that in, that language in tonight, so if there's interest in doing that, I think we would pull this one off the agenda and look into that a little bit more and bring it back.
Or adopt, adopt this and put it on a work schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because I think a lot of time is going into this already, right?
Yep.
Yeah, the alarm systems is an easy add, after paging systems.
Mm-hmm. And, let's see. I know that, I know that this isn't something we were looking at, but I was, when I looked at the curfew hours, I thought, who's going to tell a 16-year-old that they have to be home in bed at 10 o'clock? I'm pretty sure that we need to do some work on this, too.
Add it for a reason.
Yeah, we might have been asked by the sheriff's office.
Jeff asked for it, too.
Does it say we have to make sure they're in bed?
No.
No.
I added that, I added that.
That's not in here.
I just, I just know, and I know this was a long time ago, but when I was 16-years-old, I was working graveyard shifts and bar rushes at restaurants, so there's no way I was going to be home at 10 o'clock.
Just don't be wandering the streets of Columbus.
Right.
Well, I think it just gives them the ability, if they see a 16-year-old on the street after 10 o'clock, then they can tell them to go home.
Well, I wasn't sure what "present on any public street" even meant. Like, if they're driving, they're present on a public street.
Well, I don't think they would cause them an issue if they weren't looking for drugs or hooking or something.
I just hate.
If they're on their way home from work.
I hate rules that are dumb, and this one's dumb.
This just gives them the power to do something about it.
Well, if they think they're hooking or just selling drugs, I think they have reason enough to pull, pull them over and address them because they're on after 10 o'clock.
It certainly would be easy to change all of the 10 o'clock's to 11 or 12 or whatever.
Midnight or something.
But I do think this sheriff's deputy asked to have something like this in here because.
Yeah, so he has a way to enforce it, yeah.
Right, like, like the drag racing.
Yeah, so maybe we can just look to see what.
Okay, but I mean, the thing is, we've had the TPing, we've had the ding-dong ditch or whatever it is and everything, and a lot of times, that's by younger kids, and that's a tooth to put into it so that they can't do it, you know? And there are people that aren't really bothered by that, go out and look at them next door, I mean.
Well, then I'd lower the age, and I wouldn't say 16, because 16, they're working, they can be working, right? So there may be employment, I mean, I'd lower it to 14 or 15 or something, and I don't know how old those kids are that are doing that kind of stuff, but 16.
You know, as simple as adding the word loitering would change the whole meeting, because if, if you're moving in a vehicle.
Yeah.
If you're, you know.
Yeah, if you're just hanging out in the park, that's a different deal.
And that's what it's intended to do, is loitering in the park after hours.
Okay, well, so let's add that word.
Which none of us have ever done, right?
No, I never TP'd anybody either.
Oh. Can you point me to the specific section that we're talking about?
Yeah.
5-801.
It's on page 5-10.
So instead of "to be present," it would be "to loiter?"
Loiter, yep.
Yep. That's all I got.
Mr. Mayor and Council, just for clarity, since Jessica's the drafter, I mean, I feel comfortable that we can adopt it with the changes that were addressed here tonight, but I just want to make sure that Jessica is as.
Yeah.
She's going to make the revisions.
I can read them out real quick. So in 5-500A, we're changing the time to remove snow from a public sidewalk from 48 hours to 72 hours. In 5-500Q is being struck, and the exact language is being added to 5-501A. And then double A from 5-500 is going to be struck because 5-501B is identical to it. We're adding alarm systems to the list of noise prohibitions under 5-503A1, and 5-801 is, the "to be present" language is being changed to "loiter" on any public street, avenue, park, or public place.
And 5-01B, it's throw versus thrown?
Yeah.
And then do we need to include Shelley's changes, too, or are they already?
I think they were already in there.
They were in there?
They're already in there.
All right.
So I'll make the motion to adopt Ordinance 22-09, amending public safety and public nuisance with the amendments just recited by Jessica. Is there a second?
This is Sue Alstott.
Any other questions or discussion?
Can we just add a direction to staff to investigate the drag racing?
Oh, yeah.
Sure, let's do it outside the motion, though.
Okay.
It's not.
It's a different, okay.
I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye. And now you're going.
And I would just direct staff to investigate language that we could be added later that would address drag racing as a nuisance.
Got it.
Thank you.
Moving right along, engineer report.
Mr. Mayor, we need one more motion.
Oh, sorry.
Publication.
Summary publication.
So I'll make the motion to approve publication summary for Ordinance 2209 as presented, but also, or not as presented, but including the list that Jessica just recited. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye. Now, engineer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. Kevin Bittner, City Engineer, just one quick update on projects. Our West Freeway Drive project is winding down for the season this week. The soil correction work that they were required to complete will be completed this week, and the balance of the project will be completed come spring, so, and summer, so everything's on schedule.
Very good. Yeah, they're fortunate to be able to work until New Year's.
Had to dodge a few snowstorms, but other than that, they were benefited by the freezing temps, which assisted in some of the excavation work, so.
Good, attorneys report.
Mr. Mayor and Council, at your last meeting, we discussed some direction for the legislative session. I've had further conversations with Margaret Vessel and Grady Harnin in our office. We are happy to talk to leadership about the bill that we submitted the last couple of years. We wouldn't give it much of a chance at this point, but we could be wrong. What we would really like to focus on is building a coalition for transportation funding for small cities. We've also worked on that each of the two sessions, and based upon the change in leadership, we think that has a better chance of passage. I've sent you some materials, some background materials through email, including a list of 722 small cities that have the potential to benefit, so one of the reasons we want to create kind of a coalition effort is not to have Columbus carry the water for over 700 communities, but to be part of the coalition. As I discussed with Elizabeth, we would limit our work, as we've done in past years, to the months of January, February, and March, because in March are, we have the committee deadlines, and so if we don't have a bill submitted and heard by those committee deadlines, we know pretty certainly that it's not going to go forward. So the last two months of the contract would be voided out. That's our proposal, so our proposal is to work on small cities' transportation funding in this legislative session, to build a coalition, to bear some of the cost and effort. We would have a three-month contract from January through March. We would give you an update, Margaret Vessel would be here and give you an update in March, how we're doing. We would also, at the same time, test the current leadership, newly-elected leadership on the fiscal disparities issue. The reason we think it, it doesn't have much of a chance is we had Republican leadership backing that as, you know, a concern about this community bearing, and other communities bearing an unfair share of that fiscal disparities program. With Democrats in charge and new legislators coming in, it's a whole round of education, and it's a whole round of kind of starting over. So that's why we wanted to focus on transportation funding, because it crosses many communities, some represented by Democrats, some represented by Republicans. It's a kind of a bread and butter issue because, since the Constitution limits gas tax to communities over 5,000, we never get that money. And we, there are some programs that, you know, Kevin has been able to use, and some of our prior city engineers have used, to kind of bring funding to this community, but it's not, it's not always consistent. And so what we're looking for is a consistent, you know, call it 100,000, 200,000, 250,000 a year coming to this community and other communities that, that pay gas tax through their residents and through their businesses. So that's the proposal. We really need to know, you know, starting, the session starts next week, so we really need to know whether that's something you want to pursue. If you want to have a, a year off from the legislature, you know, we certainly understand, but we've, we've, you have a good track record in, in the past legislative sessions, all of the bridge funding, all of the road funding, some of the work that's still going on with LRIP money is a result of your success in the legislature. So that's, that's my update, and just, it's, it's up to you whether you want to pursue something this session.
Bill, is the three months, 10,000 a month like it was in the past?
Yep.
Okay.
Bill, how do you feel that the excess money they're all sitting on, is that a favor to us or against us?
Well, it's, in, in the past, when we've brought these types of requests, you know, the, the question has always been, is there the money? You know, this year and going forward, there's, there's quite a bit of money. You know, typically, when there's that much money, they either give some of it back, we'll see. They, they put it towards one-time investments or one-time funding. Again, we'll see, but certainly, it's easier to look at permanent, we want a permanent funding source. We don't want to have to kind of beg every year, and so it's easier to make that request when there's $17 billion, you know, sitting at the legislature. They could even create an endowment if they wanted to, you know, just, I don't think they will, but, you know, that's the sort of thing that, they can get creative. And, and when you have, I don't know that we would reach out to 722 communities, that would just be kind of a nightmare to try and manage a coalition that large. We would probably reach out to cities over 2,000 population and see if we can get folks involved. When you have, that's still, you know, half this list, and so when you have that many communities impacted in a positive way, it really, I think, improves your chances. Whereas fiscal disparities, as much as it is a bugaboo to us, it, it mostly doesn't affect, you know, the rest of the state and even the metro area that where folks are net gainers. And, and just for those listening, the reason, the reason we're not a net gainer as a city, and it, and it gets exacerbated as we develop, is our population is relatively steady, that's one factor in the calculation, and then the growth of commercial industrial in recent years is, while it's a positive for the community, it, it tilts against us in terms of the fiscal disparities fund. So there's, it's a, you know, someday, somebody's going to. So there's, it's a, you know, someday, somebody's going to redo that fund, but it's probably not going to be, you know, one, one small city leading the charge. So I'm, again, Margaret said, you know, she's happy to shop it to current leadership, new leadership. But, but I, I really, if we're going to go up there on your behalf, I'm, I'm looking for a win. So I'm looking for something that's meaningful for you and, and others.
So if you, so you think it'll be about three months. Would you know in the first month if, do you contact all those other cities and try to get whoever's going to be on board is going to be on board in that first month?
Yes. The, the first step would be to talk to leadership about this idea and the authors that, that have brought forward the bill in the past to make sure they're on board. Make sure we have Democrats, either as a lead author or certainly on the bill. We want a bipartisan bill. And so that would be done in the month of January. We would have a coalition building meeting in January. We would want to drop a bill in February, and we'd want to be heard by, by March. So there's a lot to do in, in three months. But we'd have a really good read for you by the end of March as they go into their breaks, whether we've made any headway. And then we would just, you know, if, if we feel like it's, we're running into walls, we would, you know, put a pause on and, and not go through the end.
Okay. Yeah, if, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor if, if you think, you know, that we have a chance.
I do think we have a better chance with transportation funding than fiscal disparities.
Yeah.
But I like that you're going to still shop that fiscal disparities idea because it's just so egregiously wrong. Maybe there'll be somebody someday who will want to make it right for us, even if it doesn't mean changing the formula.
Mr. Mayor and council, and I think by doing that, it's kind of like, okay, if you can't fix this, then you need to work on transportation funding. Here's what's happening. We don't get LGA, we don't get, we're a net loser on fiscal disparities, and we don't get a gas tax. So, you know, it's a triple whammy for small cities, you know, with tight budgets. And, you know, we don't have huge overhead. We don't have the kind of departments that we see in larger cities.
Yeah. So do you just need direction to do that? Or do you want a motion?
Yep.
I can move, I can move to direct the city attorney to work for the next three months, January, February, and March, with his staff lobbyists to pursue a coalition for transportation funding for small cities and also test the waters with the leadership on fiscal disparities, Bill.
I'll second it. Is there any questions or discussion? Shelley? I'll call the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye. Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
Mr. Mayor and council, and well before that, I want to have Margaret come in and just give you her general legislative update, what's going on, kind of what's happening in the, in the session, and what they're going to do with $17 billion.
Can't wait to hear that.
All right. Anything else, Bill?
That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay. Mayor and city council members report. Shelley?
Well, I just wanted to say that this is my last meeting. I have enjoyed working with the council. It's been a privilege. I'm really excited that our system works. We have people from various backgrounds that come together, and we discuss things, and we don't always get everything we want, but we get a lot of what we want, and we get what the people of Columbus want. And I was, I was surprised, presently surprised, that it does work, and that's one of the reasons why I had run. I just want to let everybody know, I've been to 388 meetings. I counted them. And it was, it was a huge learning curve. And I encourage anybody who wants to be on council to run for it and to understand the workings of city. It's just been an amazing journey, and I appreciate the Planning Commission, the council, and especially the staff.
Thank you. I don't have anything except to thank Shelley for all of her service, for sitting next to me and helping me over the last two years, learning. And we'll miss you a lot because you have a really clear vision and thoughts about the way things should be done, and that's hard to come by. So we'll miss you.
I would echo what Sue said, too. I mean, obviously, we sort of ran together. We've been on this journey for a long time, and I, I do appreciate your perspective. I don't always agree with it, and you don't always agree with mine, but that is what it's supposed to be, right? We are supposed to be representing various different viewpoints. And despite what some folks might think about, you know, us all being a coalition and all thinking alike, it's clear that we do not. And, and thank you for bringing that point of view to the council and being so steadfast in your commitment. I, I respect that tremendously.
And what more can I say, Shelley? Everybody's already said it. So thank you for all the work and all the fun.
And sorry, Ron.
And also, while we're thanking people, this last Wednesday was the last meeting for Chris King from the Planning Commission. She is retiring, and Bob Behrens, he is retiring. And actually, Ron is retiring off the Planning Commission, and he'll be taking Shelley's seat in two weeks. So it'll be a little bit of a change, but not a complete one. So that's, makes the transition easier. And he's going to learn a lot, isn't he? Heaven, he has your seat, Shelley. So anyway, thank you, Shelley. Thank you, everybody else. And let's move to the Personnel Committee report.
Okay, so there's a report that you have in your packet. The Personnel Committee's done some interviewing for both the Planning Commission and the Economic Development Authority. So I'll talk about the Planning Commission first. We had an applicant submit her, their, her interest in serving on the Planning Commission. Her name is Bethany Barret, and we interviewed her. She submitted her application on the 12th of December. We interviewed her last week, or the week before, I lose track now. She's been in the community for only nine months. She's moved here from downtown St. Paul, but she's absolutely in love with Columbus and its rural feel, and she wants to get involved and be active in trying to maintain that. She's a professional photographer. She owns and operates two photography businesses, holds a bachelor's degree, and her entrepreneurial spirit and business acumen and critical thinking skills, I think, will be a really good asset to the Planning Commission. I loved how she described herself. She says she is, she appreciates rules, but she's more of a spirit of the rule rather than a letter-of-the-law rule follower. So that will be interesting. She absolutely knows what the role of a planning commissioner is, so it'll be interesting to have that perspective be brought to, to their group. She has some flexibility in her work schedule. She knows what the time commitment is, and she's willing to take that on. And she has a, a high sense of curiosity and a need to understand things, which I think will serve her well in this capacity. So with that introduction, I would like to recommend the appointment of Ms. Bethany Barret to the Columbus Planning Commission to fill the position that actually was Bob Behrens. I think in my report, I put Chris King. It was Bob Behrens. So it would be to appoint her to the Planning Commission to fill a one-year term, ending on December 31st, 2023, which is what Bob had left of his term.
I'll second the motion. Any questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
And then moving right along, we also received an application from Ms. Karen Fleming for the Economic Development Authority. She is a current resident in Columbus, lives in the Priner Preserve neighborhood. She grew up here in Columbus, has family that has lived here and now is back. She's worked for the past 40 years in the credit union business, and 20 some, 15 years of those, no, 20 some years of those, she was the CEO for a credit union. She's also served on some Board of Directors. She has a real interest in helping Columbus attract and retain its businesses. And she describes herself as independent, self-driven, highly organized, with a genuine commitment to the position. And I know her a little bit, and I would say those are very accurate descriptors of her. So with that in mind, she would fill the currently vacant position that is on the EDA that's been vacant for, I don't know, several years now. And with that, then I would move to appoint Ms. Karen Fleming to the Economic Development Authority to fill a six-year at-large position ending on December 31st, 2030.
I'll second the motion. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
And that's, the only other thing I was going to mention is that we still do have a couple of applications for the Planning Commission that will be setting up interviews after the first of the year. And with our fingers crossed, we will, we will get another, another person appointed.
Thank you, Janet.
Yep.
Public Works, Jim?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Public Communications Coordinator report.
No report from me this evening.
Thank you. Assistant City Administrator report.
Okay, so, Mayor and council, you have a memo from myself in your packet this evening, or in the additions this evening regarding the potential sale of Howard Lake Park. I think my memo calls it Howard Lake Drive Park, which is not correct. But regardless, this is the parcel or parcels of land on the south side of Howard Lake Drive, which was, used to be a park and was closed down, I believe, in 2018, 2019?
Eighteen.
Eighteen, after a recommendation from the park board to do so. At the time, if you recall, we actually did do a, a survey online to determine how much the park was visited by members of the community. And there was kind of an overwhelming response that a lot of people don't use that park. And part of the reason was access, you know, there's not a parking lot there. There is not a really significant shoulder on Howard Lake Drive for people to park. So for, for a number of reasons, the park was closed down. And the lot, lots, I believe there's two lots. Elizabeth, can you, are you aware of that? If we look on GIS, there's two lots. Yeah.
Two lots.
So there's two lots there that currently sit vacant. And if you also recall, we previously went through a whole process of selling the Hagard Park land. And we, ever since we started that process, knew that we were going to embark on the same journey to sell the Howard Lake Park land. And this memo just describes the first step in that process, which would be having the city council ask the Planning Commission to review the sale of the property as a residential lot and essentially just confirm that it complies with the city's comprehensive plan and prepare a report back to the council stating just that. So this is just the first step in the process. I'd be happy to discuss any, any other aspects of this, if you'd like, at this time, but this memo is just to kind of get the process going.
So I'll make the motion to direct the Planning Commission to begin the review process for the sale of Howard Lake Park. Is there a second?
This is Sue, I'll second.
Are there any questions about it, or we all kind of know right where it is? And I think a lot of us were around when it was decommissioned. So I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye.
That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we have to go, we have to go back because I, I'm looking at my notes, and the math isn't adding up. So we need to go back to the appointment of Karen Fleming. So this is the situation we're in. We have two at-large seats. There are six-year terms. They're staggered, so they're one year apart. You know, so one, one term ends, the following year, the, the next one ends. I was a year ahead of myself here. One of the terms ends 12/31/2023, and the other one ends 12/31/2024. So Ms. Fleming would have to take over a term for either two years or one year, and then you would have to reappoint her for a six-year term.
Which is probably a much more palatable option for her. Try it on for size first.
I was getting way ahead of myself adding six years because I was like 20, 30.
We got so excited because we had an applicant.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, you would need a motion to reconsider, and then pass that, and then you'd reconsider the motion and amend it.
All right. I'll make a motion to reconsider. Is there a second?
This is Janet, I second.
I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jessie, aye. Now, do we want to pin her to a one-year or a two-year?
Did she say? Do you remember when you interviewed her?
We did not get into that with her.
Oh, okay. Well, let's go for two.
Well, then you can leave the other motion intact because that was for the one-year term.
No, the other, that was for the Planning Commission. This is the, this is the EDA where we... We had her on going into the next decade.
Right, right, got it, got it.
All right, so you can make the motion then for two years.
So it's a two-year term.
Okay, so I make the motion to approve...
What's her name?
Karen Fleming.
Karen Fleming, to a two-year term for the EDA.
I'll second the motion. Any other questions? I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jessie, aye.
Thank you for catching that, Elizabeth. Karen probably thanks you, too.
Yeah, really, I was way ahead of myself there.
All right. Administrator's report, number 17.
Okay. I have two things on my report. First one is the local Board of Appeal and Equalization. We received a letter from the county indicating that, once again, it's time to choose dates. And the dates must fall between Monday, April 3rd, and, and May 12th. We generally give them two dates, and then they choose from the date, from those dates as to which one they can cover for our, our meeting. In looking at page 10 of the agenda packet, the council members, at least one council member has to be trained. We do have one council member trained. My recommendation is that all council members go through the training. I think it's a really good class to go through. So, Ron, if you want me to send the information, I'll certainly send information to you to go through that training. And for those, the training is only good for three years, and then you have to take the class over again. So I will certainly send out the information for that. So dates that we're looking at, we usually do it on a non-council night.
So what about a Tuesday?
Tuesday works. Your workshop is the second Tuesday, so you would just not pick a second Tuesday of the month.
Yeah, I don't have any, any dates fine with me, as long as it's not a Monday.
So you have the 18th, the 25th of April, and then the 2nd and 9th of May.
About we shoot for the 18th and the 9th, so we don't get up against the deadline for any reason, in case we get a snowstorm. But they will, they'll choose the day for us then, once we submit.
Correct. So your first choice is April 18th, and the second choice is May 9th?
Unless anybody has any objections, that's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
Those two dates.
For every reason, my calendar is in 2016, so I need to get into the right year here. April 18th. Well, how appropriate, April 18th is tax day. We'd be having our...
Fifteenth.
No, that's not on my calendar. It says tax day's on April 18th, 2023. Well, whatever, that's what, that's what the iPhone says. And, or May 9th?
Yeah, the 15th is Saturday. Yeah, the fifteenth is Saturday.
Yep.
Then we get two extra days.
Don't we have a, do we not have a workshop on May ninth?
The work, that would be a workshop night. You'd have to have the workshop, and then you'd have to break out of the workshop and go to the, you would have to convene as the Local Board of Appeal and Equalization at that point.
But didn't you say you didn't want it on a workshop night?
Well, it's, you know, it's whatever, whatever you think is works.
Well, how long does that meeting go? I can't remember.
Depends on how many people show up.
Depends how many.
Yeah.
I mean, it would be kind of nice to have it on a night when we're already here, unless it gets to be too much.
I mean, we could certainly do that, you know, and we can say, we're only going to take one presentation, and then we're going to do the Local Board of Appeal, if that's the date that they choose.
Oh, let's do that.
Okay. And you, you want it, you want the, so if our workshop starts at five-thirty, do you want to start at six-thirty? Do you want it to start at seven? What time do you want the start time?
Six-thirty is good for me.
Okay. That leaves one, room for one presentation, and then we can convene as a local board. That'll work.
All right.
The second item on my report, if we look at the additions, it's good news for Jessica as she's, she's moving on to her new career. Sad for Columbus, because she did give us our, her resignation, and then she'll be leaving us this coming Friday, but I'm certainly happy for her. It's really rewarding to see people to go on and do the career that they want to do and, and work through it. So I'm happy for her that she's moving on to her, her new career.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations. I'm sad, though. And I didn't see the, I didn't see the resignation letter. Does it, does it say on there where you're going?
I'm going to an intellectual property law firm in downtown Minneapolis.
Okay.
So, yeah, I am, it's been a pleasure to work here past six years. It seems like time just really flew by, and I've been so fortunate to be able to attend law school while working here at the city of Columbus, and that's all thanks to Elizabeth working with me. And I didn't know that I wanted to be a lawyer until I came to a council meeting in Saka, and you know what Bill does here and what the team does as attorneys. So I'm grateful for the opportunity and for how much I've learned, and I will miss it here. Columbus is a unique and special community, and I'm grateful to have been welcomed to it, and for the amount that I've learned and the people I've met. So, thank you.
So I'll make the motion to accept the resignation letter from Jessica Hughes. We wish her the best in her new career. Is there a second?
This is Janet, a second.
I'll call for the vote.
Shelley, aye.
Sue, aye.
Janet, aye.
Jesse, aye.
And I will excuse myself for one minute, and I'll be right back.
All right, while she slips away, we will look at our calendar of announcements and reminders. Planning Commission meeting is on the fourth, and remember, our meetings all start at six o'clock from here on out. City Council workshop is on the tenth, that starts at five-thirty. EDA at five on the eleventh. City Council meeting on the eleventh at six, and the whole calendar is on the back. And.
The times are wrong on the calendar.
Oops, on the back page.
But it's right on here.
All right. Then what I'll do is make the motion to adjourn.
Let's, let's not adjourn, so then you'll still be in a public meeting, otherwise you have to scatter.
Oh, all right.
Okay.
Then hold that. Shelley, this is for you.
It was only four years.
That's only one day.
I know, but Jeff, you know, Jeff was, thank you.
You have to open up while we watch.
Oh, no. This is like Christmas. Oh, I'm afraid.
Don't be afraid.
Still have to open.
You're in the light.
Santa.
Just like Christmas, see?
Yes. I'm a big Christmas person. When you excused yourself, I should have run. It's a plaque that recognizes my service. Thank you. And a picture of my husband getting to sleep with a politician. Thank you very much.
Well, that was your inauguration.
Same suit.
We're sad you didn't let us put it on the billboard, Shelley. That's really what I wanted, was a picture of you underneath the billboard with your big thank you in lights.
Yeah, no. That's okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, not to be too much of a Scrooge, you can adjourn the meeting and have refreshment, so that's covered by the open meeting law.
So I'll make the motion to adjourn. Is there a second, Shelley?
I'll second it.
All right.
And I'll say aye.
I'll call for the vote.
Last time.
All right.
Aye.
Janet, aye.
And Jesse, aye. Again, thank you, the meeting's adjourned.